But in practice, it's exhausting to try to lead a policy change at the city. It takes a really long time. It takes an enormous amount of emotional labor from the council member who's leading the thing, just trying to figure out like, okay, how do I get this done? How do I motivate staff? How do I figure out what's blocking this up? Is the mayor opposed? Is that's what's happening? Is it truly they don't have enough staff capacity? Is one of my colleagues threatening them or yelling at them? And to me, one of the solutions to that is that no matter what happens with question one, I really think the city council has needed its own staff so that it can separate function as a separate legislative body with a little more, you know, kind of independence.
Are we gonna do banter?
Well, no, we already did that.
Okay, yeah. See, the thing about talking to elected officials, they stiffen up on the podcast. Like Steve Fletcher is a really interesting guy, but I was kind of disappointed in that episode because it feels like council members are gun shy, like, I don't know.
Do you think there'd be any reason why?
Maybe, maybe.
One time you said this thing out of context.
Yeah, but nobody listens to this so we can have fun, right?
Well, that's good.
And you're not running for reelection.
That's true.
So we are allowed to have fun. So how are you feeling? How is this election going? Do you feel good? You feel bad? I feel bad. I personally feel very bad all the time.
Yeah, I'm in a constant state of panic about what happens in this election and what will happen to small things like a homeless shelter we've been trying to get built in Whittier and Word 10, or really big things like our work on racial equity and climate change. Just constant state of panic.
Is that based on anything? Do you have any inside information?
I mean, I think if Minneapolis voters turn out for this election, that all of the attack mailers and the Facebook ads and the millions of dollars being spent by, what, 23 high donors isn't gonna matter because the people of Minneapolis support all of the work that we've been doing. I think if people feel so, you know, disenchanted and disillusioned and overwhelmed and just don't go vote, then we're looking at a generational shift of power in our city that's really troubling.
So I remember, let's shift to the beginning. I remember going to neighborhood association meetings in your first year in 2014 and seeing you get heckled about apartment buildings and thinking it was the most painful thing I'd ever witnessed. And it turns out those were the good old days.
It seems quaint now.
Yeah, that wasn't, that was nothing, right? And did you ever think, did you ever think at the end of eight years when it was all said and done that I would have a podcast?
Well, I didn't know you when I was running for office.
No, I mean, 2014, 2014.
Well, I know, that's when I met you though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. No, I didn't know, I didn't know you at all. You just, I remember the first thing I ever saw that you made was this graphic with my predecessor who I'd run against and beat the incumbent floating over a house with balloons.
Right, yeah. She was the balloon magnate.
Right. And I was, I was like, oh no. He's gonna make everyone really mad. I didn't know who you were. All the people who were yelling at me at those neighborhood meetings, I was like, they're gonna think I did this.
Well, there's a lot of people who create sock puppet accounts to make themselves look.
Yeah, but back then, there wasn't even, I didn't even really have like a Twitter account until after I was in office. Someone had to explain to me, don't respond to the tweets because then your followers see that, but they didn't see the other thing. I'm, you know, I'm too old for the governing in the social media age. But you know, something happened along the way with Wedge Live where I would walk into a coffee shop in Whittier or in Uptown and hear young renters talking about zoning or talking about what happened at City Hall. And a lot of that is because you and others have really helped make a connection between people's lives in City Hall. And you've done it in a way that's, you know, funny and engaging. And I think it's really made a difference. That's my cheesy reflection on the last eight years, but true.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what have you, what have you learned in eight years about City Hall? What is the wisdom you can offer us?
Yeah, I mean, oh, there's so much to say, but I think the two things is, number one, our government is absolutely not working for the people who are most vulnerable and most in need. It is absolutely set up to serve the wealthiest, most powerful people. And we've been able to make some change. But what's being framed as a radical shift is just really very incremental, moderate changes that have helped to try to start to level the playing field, to try to open up access for people, you know, outside of the downtown council and the really powerful business interests of our city. We have a long way to go. I also think I've become much more of an incrementalist than I was when I first took office. So on the one hand, we need radical change for our city's government to meet the goals that almost everyone says they want. And I also think it's okay to take things gradually and that often, you know, getting something done and building momentum is the path to bigger shift, to bigger change. I think you can see that a lot in how we approach the housing work. And I think the things, you know, the thing that is astonishing to me watching this dialogue around this election is we've made, we've made big changes in Minneapolis. We really have meaningful changes. And they're all also pretty moderate incremental change. So to consider that kind of stuff radical, I don't know, I just think it's setting our city up for conflict.
Yeah, when I think about the Public Safety Charter Amendment, like what I see happening in the future is extremely incremental. Like, like it gets painted as very radical as if the police department goes away in 30 days. Police department's still gonna be here. Like this time next year, we're gonna be having the same budget fights about police staffing that we had this year, last year, two years ago. It's just like a permission structure in the charter to start building something over time. It's like the 2040 conversation centered on the idea that entire neighborhoods would be bulldozed, and that has turned out not to be true at all, not even close. So, yeah, it feels very incremental. That's the likeliest, I mean, that's absolutely what's, we're either gonna have no change or very incremental change.
Yeah, I mean, if the question passes, we've done years of work to analyze all the reasons people call 911. We had a working group set up with MPD Fire, 911, 311, a bunch of city staff from other departments, health, city coordinator's office, city attorney, and then also community advisors, folks who had been appointed as community representatives. They looked at all the reasons people are calling for help, all the 911 calls, they separated it out into problem nature codes. That's what's informed this very moderate investment, modest investment in violence prevention. It's helped us shift some of the calls for parking complaints out of MPD into rec services to have 311 start answering the call for police reports. This is a very, it's a reorganization of staff and resources and a way for us to invest in the kind of safety system that people overwhelmingly say they want, right? When you ask the question, do you want more types of safety response? Do you want mental health response and violence prevention? Overwhelmingly, people say yes. But we have to build those systems and that money has to come from somewhere to fund those things. We can't have them, you know, people say both and, but they really just mean both police officers and more police officers and police officers who aren't working and extraordinarily expensive police settlements are the, a massive amount of funds that are going into policing and its ramifications in Minneapolis is extraordinary. And it makes me really worried for our city's budget.
Yeah, you had a comment at a council meeting recently that in 2014, 145 million for, that was the police budget for 850 officers and the mayor's proposed budget for 2022 is 192 million, so 47 million more for 100 fewer officers. That's not sustainable, I think was your point. What do you, what do you do about that? We're still gonna have police coming into the future. So is it simply about like putting as many tasks as possible into the hands of non-police responders just to sort of minimize the risk?
I think that's one of the big reasons to, from a practical standpoint, to keep expanding our other safety tools. We've seen that a combination of factors means that police officers can leave the force and we still have to pay significant expenses for officers who are not working. So 12 million of that increase in MPD's budget for 2022 would be for settlements with officers who are leaving with worker compensation claims. There's another 12 million and another fund to cover that next year, plus 12 million more to cover the cost of lawsuits from police behavior. And then there's nothing to stop others from leaving in the same way, further increasing the cost of the department and lowering the service. So yes, I think we need to build a more resilient public safety system. I think one of the big advantages of investing in other types of safety responses like mental health, like outreach for folks experiencing homelessness, opioid-specific supportive response is police don't really even, at least in private conversations, say that they're the right people to be responding to those calls. Increasingly, there's more and more resistance from community to having police respond. And it sets everyone up for failure. So, and then separately, we've had this attrition problem. You know, that's been the case for years. There's always been an issue of we have an aging workforce, especially in departments like the police department and a lot of risk related to folks all retiring at the same time. There's always been a need to do more and better transition planning. But to me, the big, one of the big strategic reasons to have a department of public safety, to really invest in a workforce that's providing better safety system that includes police but doesn't rely only on police, is that it creates more resilience. It allows these other workers to do a lot of things that they're better equipped or trained to do, and it leaves police officers able to focus on responding to and hopefully solving and preventing violent crime, which make up a small percent of our total 911 calls. So there's so many reasons to invest in a more broad system.
Let's talk about the strong mayor thing. Are you, do you think that's a big deal?
I think it's a very big deal.
And so I saw you ask about, I think it was four scenarios you asked, the city attorney's office. And one of the things that's alarming to me is the city attorney's office just won't offer any kind of feedback or analysis of the impact of it at all. Like, what, isn't that what you're supposed to do? Help the city council understand. And they did it to Cam Gordon, too. Like, they just won't offer an opinion.
Well, in this case, the public.
Right. So your four scenarios were like legislating, constituent service, like policies like complete streets. I forget what the fourth one, was it four or three? You had a series of questions, but do you have any sense now? Do you feel like you have an answer, if not from the city attorney's office?
I think it was those three.
Do you feel like you understand?
I don't think there's a shared understanding among staff leaders at City Hall about what the change means in a way that's deeply concerning. I think the city clerk has one thing he's saying on his campaign tour of neighborhood organizations. The city attorney is asking questions that seem different than the city clerk's assumptions. The city coordinator is leading a process with department heads and staff and folks from League of Minnesota Cities, but that's at a really early stage. So I met with Public Works the other day and they were talking, we were talking about our complete streets policy, which is going to be updated soon, and then a road reconstruction project in my ward, both of which go through the city council now. And I asked them, have you thought about what will happen if question one passes? Will the mayor be able to just ignore our complete streets policy and direct you to not do any of this stuff? Will the city council still do layout approval for street reconstruction projects? Or will that be administratively approved or essentially approved by the mayor's office? The people can't answer those questions. It's a big deal because people are used to contacting their city council members. And if anything, our constituents want us to do more. They want us to do more in terms of direct management of city departments. And they want us to do more as far as the police department, which under the current charter, we don't have control to do. So the whole reason that myself and other council members have proposed the governance shift of question two in an earlier council version was because our constituents are demanding that we do something about police behavior and we do not have policy or legislative authority over the police. And we've tried to use the budget as a lever, as some people have suggested, including charter commissioners, oh, just use the budget. And it was a disaster. We tried to hold back money and then ask the police department to come back and tell us what they're doing with it. And it just turned into this whole confusing thing about has the city council, you know, decreased funding or increased funding, or now they changed their mind. It just doesn't work as an accountability tool because the public understanding of what's happening in the police department and at the city isn't strong enough to use that kind of lever. Plus, they just ignore us. The mayor and the chief in the police department just ignore us.
You cut the police horse budget and then they just funded the police horses anyway.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I would expect if question one passes and the current mayor is reelected, that when it's convenient, the mayor will just ignore the city council's position and that will be highly motivated by the current news cycle or the political pressure at the time. The way that the amendment is written is extraordinarily limiting of city council power. Much more, it is not like what St. Paul has in its charter. And I think it's bad no matter who is mayor. I think the political ramifications of question one passing and the current mayor getting reelected are a really big deal.
Yeah.
Like, worst case scenario is the mayor says, you want streets plowed in your ward? You want constituent services answered in your ward? You need to vote for my budget, or you need to vote against this thing, or you need to, whatever, be on my team. That's what a highly political mayor would do with question one's power.
And we definitely do have a highly political mayor. So I was reading an interview you did with Max Nesterak last November, I think, where he asked what was tougher to deal with, your critics to the right or your critics to the left? And you said it wasn't about either, it was about dealing, it was about resistance from staff on drafting new policy. I think mostly housing policy, I think, was the subject of your answer, like tenant opportunity to purchase. So do you, can you say what that resistance is about? Do you have a clearer idea of what that's about? Especially in light of the strong mayor charter amendment, it feels especially relevant.
Absolutely. I mean, right now, city staff respond, report to the mayor and the city council. The mayor, the mayor of Minneapolis has a lot of power today. It's untrue and inaccurate to call our system a weak mayor system. It is not. The mayor appoints department heads or nominates department heads, which are then approved by the city council. So in order to get reappointed for your job, you have to have the support of the mayor. To get fired from your job, you know, you need seven city council members to agree so much that they want to take action to remove you from your position. And so even though the department heads are reporting, you know, to the council and to the mayor, the mayor has a lot of power and leverage in that system. And, you know, it frustrates staff when I talk about this a lot. And I wish they would talk about it more openly and more accurately, frankly, because I think there's a couple of things happening. I know that on policies that I've worked on, the mayor has either said he doesn't support it or has given the impression to staff that it's not a good idea to work on because they've told me that. But a lot of it sounded behind the scenes and it's about dragging things out and taking longer and slowing things down. I think we've, you know, during my time as council president, it was a pretty big culture shift to go from council president Barb Johnson to me. I obviously have a really different set of priorities, a really different way of governing. And I wanted it and expect our city departments to meet our city's goals that our constituents are, you know, asking for or demanding. And so it was a pretty big shift from kind of like slow things down, don't do that crazy thing, to me saying, let's get as much done as we can. So that's some of it, is just a change and a culture shift. But, you know, I think at the end of the day, you know, we do have a system that makes it hard to point, to track accountability. We have a mayor who doesn't like to take positions on things. You can see that very clearly publicly because he's returning really the most controversial decisions back to council as deemed approved instead of either approving or vetoing them. You can see that in this sort of flip flopping or whatever is happening around rent stabilization policies. But I think it's been hard for city staff to track all of that. It's kind of a long answer to the question, but in practice, it's exhausting to try to lead a policy change at the city. It takes a really long time. It takes an enormous amount of emotional labor from the council member who's leading the thing, just trying to figure out like, okay, how do I get this done? How do I motivate staff? How do I figure out what's blocking this up? Is the mayor opposed? Is that's what's happening? Is it truly they don't have enough staff capacity? Is one of my colleagues threatening them or yelling at them? And to me, one of the solutions to that is that no matter what happens with question one, I really think the city council has needed its own staff so that it can separate function as a separate legislative body with a little more, you know, kind of independence and flexibility from department staff that are embedded in the city's departments.
That sounds like a huge budget fight. Would that, I mean, how much staff capacity would that be? Would that be like a lot of money?
Well, if it, if question, I mean, I mean, just thinking of it in terms of this charter amendment, you know, if the government structure stays the way it is now, I don't think it would take a lot more staff on the council side to help the council work collaboratively with department staff on policy proposals and change, but not rely solely on them when things are getting stuck in the process. I think if question one passes and this vision of having a separate legislative body that's totally separate from the executive branch would absolutely require the city council to have significant staff. And the problem with that is that in our current structure, and certainly in the new structure, the mayor has an enormous amount of power over the budget. So the mayor proposes the budget, then it goes to the board of estimate and taxation. So the maximum levy gets set and then it comes to council for markup and adoption. So by the time a budget gets to the city council, the budget has been proposed and the levy is set, and that means we have to cut something in order to fund something new. That is the basis for all of the debates about public safety because even though the mayor says he supports both and blah, 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 he's not funding both and and. He's only funding police. So in order for us to invest in public safety improvements like mental health response and these other alternatives, we have to cut something. So yes, shifting staff to the city council would be a huge lift. And is one of the reasons that I think question one is so dangerous. Because this idea that, oh yeah, we'll just have these two separate branches of government like I learned about in seventh grade and my government class, in practice would require dramatic budget shifts in a really different kind of way that people are interacting with their elected officials.
I feel like the typical question one supporter probably doesn't really want the government to function this way. They probably want to be able to go to their council member and say, hey, stop this thing, don't do that. And that's my experience of that, that side of Minneapolis politics. They want a, they want the aldermanic privilege thing to persist.
I think they assume that the mayor will be on their side because they're from wards that have high voter turnout.
Right.
Or they don't truly understand how big of a power shift it really is.
So what is the impact of the lack of communication staff for the city council? You talked about that recently. The mayor has communication staff, the city council doesn't. So in a crisis, journalists have a hard time reaching council members. And what's, what's the practical impact? Should the, does the city council need its own communication staff?
If the city council is gonna continue to do the kind of policy change that people increasingly expect from the city council, then yes. And there's a lot to say about that. So not all council members do policy work. Some council members literally just do constituent services, which is, you know, someone calls and says, I'm trying to open a business and I have some questions, or I want a stop sign on the corner, or, you know, the garbage didn't get picked up today. And what the council member is doing, if they're just doing straight constituent services, is calling someone in a city department or at the park board or at the county and connecting that constituent to the appropriate staff. So it's a little bit like a, you know, kind of a, it's a lot like what our 311 service does. Ideally, council members are also noticing patterns and the kinds of questions that they're getting and looking for budget or policy solutions to those patterns or issues that are cropping up. And that doesn't happen equally throughout the city. In the wealthier, low density neighborhoods where there's not a lot happening, there just isn't as much going on. But in the high poverty wards or places where there's a lot of development pressure or there's a lot of infrastructure shifts, even just the ward projects, there's a lot more to do. And then from there, some of us write ordinances or lead budget amendment proposals, but not all council members do those things. And then on top of that, you know, if you're a committee chair or the council president, you have, I have a lot more responsibilities than my colleagues, but I don't have more staff. I have two staff in my office who are an associate and a policy aide. They're responsible for responding to constituent issues, helping support my policy work and communications, supporting the whole city council in my role as council president. And those are the staff that answer the phone if a reporter calls. You know, the mayor right now has three or four full-time staff just working on communications and press outreach. So that means that those staff are trained in communications, they have experience building relationships with press, they know how to strategically place stories that are favorable to the mayor, they are able to host press conferences with the support of our city's communications staff, which don't support the city council. And so we're just on our own. So if we're writing an ordinance, you know, I have to write my own press release and send it to media. I have to write my own press release and send it to media. And we didn't always actually do that. We used to wait until after the ordinance was already done. And so we were always in this reaction reactive mode, trying to explain what our policies were designed to do. We've gotten a lot better at being proactive. Um, so that's partly just how we're using our time and energy. Um, we've gotten some training for the council aides from the offices that do work on a lot of policy change. Um, but, you know, I'll be in a city council meeting and I'll get a bunch of press calls, but I'm chairing the meeting. And I, you know, I have a lot of work throughout the day that I'm like sandwiching these press, um, requests in. And I think, of course, you saw that when we were in the national spotlight. Um, you know, we just didn't have communications support to deal with the national media requests and all of the kinds of things that were coming in. I, we did our best to respond and to be transparent. And if we had had more support, I think we could have been a lot more strategic and effective at communicating what was happening in Minneapolis and why.
So that's interesting. If you wanted to hold a press conference and like live stream it to YouTube, set up a podium, have microphones, communications department just does not support that for city council members?
That's right.
That's interesting.
They would maybe do that, like if we had an announcement about something that had already passed the city council, but not if we were proposing a new ordinance or something like that.
So what do we need in the next mayor? What, what's wrong with this mayor? I feel like, uh, there was somebody who was chastising you and for some reason tagged me in, into it on Twitter about how childish, uh, politics have become and like a pox on both their houses kind of thing.
Oh, yeah.
Why, why should we, why should we think that the mayor is the child? And Lisa Bender's not the child. Are you the child? Or is everybody being childish?
I'm not the child, I'm the mother hen at city hall. Um, I've bit my, I've bit my tongue so hard that it's like bleeding here, man. I mean, I don't want to fight with anyone. I'm really good at getting along with people. That's why I got elected unanimously to be the council president after a super divided term last term, my first term in office, when there were these two teams and people crying on the dais all the time. And I came in and, and helped bring the body together. Almost all of my ordinances pass unanimously. And that's, that's not nothing. That's, that demonstrates an enormous amount of work, building relationships, hearing what each council member needs, both politically and substantively, understanding that council members come at this job really differently. Some folks are super values driven and they want, you know, particular things that align with their values. Some folks are super politically oriented and more transactional. And you have to navigate that in a way that's gets the, gets something done. Um, and so, you know, when, when people have this right, sort of like say or suggest that I'm hard to work with, I just find it so mind boggling because of course I'm not hard to work with. I've led all of this progressive policy change uh, to a place where it's almost always unanimously supported. Um, and I, you know, I do that, I do a lot of stuff behind the scenes. I'm not out having press conferences all the time. And, um, and I haven't wanted to fight with this mayor. For most of the term, my strategy was just focus on the council. There was a lot of energy in the council to, um, to work on these big policy, um, shifts and budget investments. And the mayor had like his couple of things that he was really interested in. Um, so it didn't seem to really be a great use of energy. Uh, to, you know, kind of, um, try to get him more interested in the policy work. So, yeah, I don't know. And then of course, after George Floyd and the pandemic and all the things, we had to work together, we had to work together to transition our workforce to remote, um, environment and handle the pandemic and invest our CARES Act and ARPA dollars. The Star Tribune wrote this weird story about how I don't talk to the mayor on the phone enough, but I talk to the mayor on the phone all the time, hours and hours and hours, um, spent in 2020. Um, and, and the meantime, you know, his campaign is just like trashing us, calling us names, being horrible. And, um, it, it's hard, it's hard to, to navigate. I don't want to fight with anyone, but I have to defend myself and I have to defend the council.
You're the ineffective in fighting city council, according to the mayor's pack, I think.
Which is just such nonsense. Because we have, we've led the country in passing progressive policy change. Um, it's not possible to do that if there's this, I mean, it is extremely functional body that has been able to set aside differences when we need to. Um, you know, not everyone agrees all the time, of course not. We represent 13 different wards with really different priorities. But this city council has worked very well together, um, through a really, really hard time, including now 18 months remotely.
Lisa Goodman was mean to Andrew Johnson once recently. So I think that counts as infighting.
There are, there are personalities in the council. There are big personalities in the city council.
So strong mayor proponents will say things like, uh, the chaos last summer was a, a function of council members giving orders to police. I'm hearing that semi-frequently from Charter for Change. It seems unbelievable to me and it hasn't been reported in the news anywhere. It's just coming from advocates, uh, for that charter change question one. Seems unbelievable to me that, that anyone with MPD thinks that the council gives them orders or that that was the reason it all went, went bad last year. Is that, is that just entirely made up? Where's that coming from?
So you know that I was in the Boundary Waters with my girls when the police killed George Floyd and we got stuck in a windstorm. It was just me and my nine and seven-year-old. So we're paddling back, trying to get home. So I wasn't here for the first few days. Um, I know that my colleagues were, some of them out with protests, observing and supporting the protests along with some members of our legislative delegation. I have no doubt that folks contacted the mayor and the police chief, and I know the fire chief to ask for more support and help. I, I don't know what on earth anyone else is talking about besides that. Um, I, I'm sure that my colleagues contacted the mayor and the chief and asked them to, to have the police stop shooting at people. But that is not the same as giving a command to officers. And, and like you said, police officers know that they report to the chief and to the mayor. Although I, this is the truth about our police department. Uh, you know, I don't know this, like I, I'm not in these conversations. I don't have written evidence, but it seems pretty clear that the police federation is, has a lot of power and influence about how officers are acting day to day. And so I'm not sure how strong the chain of command is in with, is within our department, but it certainly isn't because of the city council.
So what is next in housing policy? We've got this 2040 plan. We've got this rent control charter amendment on the ballot this year. What would you want to see the next city council push on housing that you haven't been able to do in eight years?
Well, I'm hopeful that the next city council will be building on our work and not fighting back against gutting our homelessness and housing policies. I was at a community meeting about a shelter that we've been trying to open. And I'm nervous that the next Ward 10 council member or the next council or the next mayor, especially if question one passes, won't support this kind of, you know, even something as simple as one shelter in one neighborhood. Um, I, I don't think that will happen, but that's my worst fear. Um, I, you know, I think, you know, you're, you're a, you know, an observer of the details of city hall. So I think you understand the shift that happened in the 2040 plan. But I think something that a lot of folks miss is the profound political shift that happened through the adoption of the 2040 plan, which is actually related to what the Charter Commission is talking about. So both in housing and in transportation and infrastructure, decisions used to be made project by project by project. Every apartment building that was proposed needed variances and CUPs. It would go to the neighborhood organization in those meetings that you talked about at the beginning of our conversation, where everyone would scream at each other and their council member and feel really frustrated. And there was extraordinary inconsistency in what you saw happening across the city in the really wealthy parts of the city, where there are a bunch of lawyers and architects and, um, folks on the city, you know, on their neighborhood board, they'd just redesign the building and make it shorter and more expensive materials and more parking and make it twice as expensive. And the rents could bear that in the fanciest parts of the city. Um, so, and not, you know, and not in other parts of the city. And so the, the really extraordinary shift that we made through the 2040 plan is that we actually have a citywide approach to housing that says small multifamily buildings, rental buildings are allowed in every neighborhood in our city. We're not carving out certain neighborhoods. We're not continuing to exacerbate the racial, racially restrictive patterns of redlining and covenants. We're starting to allow for rental housing citywide. We're concentrating bigger multifamily buildings along transit in alignment with our climate change goals and our access and equity goals. We're requiring affordable housing in buildings in a way that's predictable and is also citywide. And on top of that, we're protecting renters and starting to level the playing field so that renters in our city have more rights and more chance to live in affordable, safe and stable housing. I think the next, you know, if, if we continue the momentum that we've been building, um, you know, the next phase of this work, I think, is really about intervening more as, um, you know, trying to support more innovative market solutions that promote both cooperative ownership and public ownership of land. I think that's kind of like the big next thing in housing in Minneapolis.
Let's talk about, uh, transportation. Is, uh, the Transportation Action Plan going to stick? Or is Lisa Goodman just gonna run roughshod over it? And I'm speaking about Hennepin Avenue.
Oh, John, you look frozen. Am I frozen?
I'm still here. You're, you're still with me.
Oh, good. Okay. Um, yes, you, maybe my computer sensed my panic over transportation as another topic area. I, you know, I, I really think, I think, I think the housing stuff is so solidly ingrained in our policies, in our, what staff, you know, now I think really have fully embraced. I don't think there's a huge amount of risk in rolling back our housing work. I'm more nervous about transportation and climate. This isn't an area that the current mayor prioritizes. So if question one passes, um, it's, it'll be harder for the council to lead in this space. Um, and we're not as far along. We're in this really delicate phase between, you know, we adopted this plan and now it's like right at the beginning of implementation. So it hasn't become so commonplace. I still think, um, I, I think we're getting there. I think more and more people are making the connection between infrastructure decisions and climate change and really understanding that we cannot continue to prioritize movement and storage of single occupancy vehicles and meet our, our, you know, access and equity goals and our climate change goals. And that will be the crux of if we're successful, um, is continuing to make that connection for people and then also having high-quality projects that people really love. Um, so I, you know, I think more and more of our bike infrastructure is going to be separated and, uh, we're getting better as a city at building high-quality separated bike facilities. The worst case scenario is when a road isn't really working for anyone. And everyone's kind of mad and frustrated. And then that just kind of diminishes momentum. So we need to get a few really great streets built in the city that show what it can be like when we really prioritize all of the modes, when we build really high-quality transit, walking and biking infrastructure. And then I think you'll see the momentum start. I'm optimistic, but I think it really does matter what happens in this next election.
Here, here's a tough question. How are you ranking your Ward 10 ballots?
I haven't decided. Um, Katie Jones and Ayesha Chukti are my top two choices by a, by a very long shot. I think they both have, they would both make amazing Ward 10 council members. I'd be so proud to hand off the office to them and support their leadership. I'm inspired by both of them. They're incredible women, incredible leaders. Um, and they'll, they would be, be both be very good at all the things that need to happen. You know, I think if we're in a really highly political environment where, um, there's a strong mayor and it's a conservative political mayor, then Ayesha's organizing experience and her political experience will be really important to try to like maintain power and fight back against rolling back change. I think Katie's engineering background and all of her experience with public process will help her govern really well if governing is a thing that can happen in the new administration. Um, so I think they're both amazing. And then I'll, I'll rank David Wheeler as my third choice.
Oh, really? I think you're taking my advice on that one. Did you get the idea from me?
No, I didn't see your ranking.
Oh, you need to read wedgealive.com. I ranked David Wheeler third because, uh, he's the only one of the conservative side who like, he doesn't pander to, uh, the anti progressives on, uh, transportation.
I agree. He, he, you know, he's, I, I agree. He's had experience governing. I think he's, he's more conservative than the ward by a lot. So, you know, if voter turnout is low, then, then you get a different result at Ward 10. But, um, but I think he'll listen. I think if he goes to a Woody Alliance meeting and 50 young renters tell him that they really want, you know, a supportive shelter or housing project, he'll listen to them. I'm not sure about the other two conservative candidates. They make me really nervous.
He's not viable. The problem for David Wheeler is he's not viable. That's.
Well, no one's viable, viable if everyone says they're not viable.
Well, that's why I keep saying David Wheeler's not viable.
It's like how the Star Tribune wrote a profile about Kate Knuth 12 days before the election and then they were like, no one knows her name.
Oh, wow. I didn't even read that.
But the Star Tribune has been ghosting her for, you know, eight months.
Have they? I, I don't read the Star Tribune much. I've been fascinated by their endorsements though. Mickey Moore, do you have a reaction to the Mickey Moore saga at all? You don't have to. I know you're not running for office again, but it seems like a political loser for you to even say the name Mickey Moore.
I'm really nervous that institutional powers, including the Star Tribune editorial board, are so focused on getting candidates that agree with them on these three ballot questions or who they think will listen to the handful of folks who they want running the city, that they've sacrificed, you know, job experience, residency, you know, basic required, what should be basic requirements for, for this job. Um, and I worry that too many voters are, are doing that knowingly or inadvertently too. Um, it's not a good idea to elect folks who don't want to govern.
Yeah, I'm, I'm worried, uh, I don't know how the election is going to go, but I'm worried, uh, for example, you could lose, you lose Lisa Bender for sure. You're not running. You could lose Cam Gordon. You could lose a couple of other people. And like, what, what is even left to, to try to accomplish things? Legislating goes out the window, nothing changes. And we're in that scenario where it's, you talked about with, uh, your organizing to try to, to fight back against, against a conservative. your organizing to try to to fight back against against a conservative mayor and possibly a council majority. I don't know. It's grim.
The most grim part of that is that, you know, redistricting is coming up. There'll be new council boards and a special election in 2023. So if you end up with question one passing, a strong mayor, the incumbents back, that those packs that are blanketing our city with, you know, lies. They'll, if they haven't succeeded in taking over the city council in 2021, they'll have a free shot at the council in 2023 in what is almost certainly going to be a lower turnout election because it's only for city council. So, you know, again, in 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 a lot of wards, if you look at the population of people who always vote versus the population of the whole ward, it's so different who would get elected. So if you have a really low voter turnout election and, you know, millions of dollars spent either disenfranchising or confusing voters. I guess that's the plan, right? The plan through with this coordinated strategy is, you know, take over the, you know, give all the power to the mayor, elect a conservative mayor, have a free shot at the council in 2023, take over the council and then and then nothing happens. And I just, I mean, I don't know how that's going to end. I I actually think it's a massive miscalculation by the conservative powers that be, who probably haven't even been in the city in 18 months. Like, the people of Minneapolis support this work. That is why we passed paid sick time and raised the minimum wage and passed renter protections and are investing in infection support. That's why we're transforming safety. We didn't invent these problems and solutions. They come from our constituents. And they're not going to go away. I mean, that strategy relies on voter disenchantment or voter suppression. That's the only way that the conservative government takeover strategy can work. And I, in the short term, people might feel so tired from Trump and, you know, the pandemic and the crisis and all the things it might happen in the short term that people feel too tired to go out and vote. I hope not. Anyone who's listening, please don't give up. But it's not going to work in the long term. And I don't think people really understand how moderate the changes we have made are and what it would look like. You know, there's two strong candidates for mayor, Kate Canute, who I think would come in and do an amazing job of regrouping and helping the city come together and heal. She'd have a real shot at holding the police department accountable. I trust her to set up a functioning government as a partner with the council, no matter what happens with the charter questions. She has experience governing. She would be a great mayor. And you have Shilin Dajad, who has been leading a movement for change in our city. Her campaign slogan on the back of her T-shirts is from the streets to the spreadsheets. And she is not messing around. Like, she is incredibly smart and detail oriented and is really good at connecting what government is doing to people's lives. And she would set up a what is a more radical shift in our government that I don't think people really understand how different that would be than like inching along with the kind of moderate changes that we have been making. If you think about the kind of department heads that Mayor Nishad would nominate for the council, then you start to really think about, wow, that would be a really different approach to governing Minneapolis. And I think eventually that that seems inevitable to me in Minneapolis eventually. Especially if conservative powers try to hold back moderate change.
Right.
But I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball. Maybe everyone just gets so like depressed that like Steve and Jonathan make all the decisions. I don't know. I swing wildly between panic and optimism.
Yeah, somebody, I think it was Ashley Fairbanks, who was admonishing people on Twitter. Like, if you if you don't think the mayor's going to win, you're fooling yourself.
Yeah.
But I don't know what's going to happen. Would you do it all over again, Lisa Bender, this this eight years? All all the pain, all the successes, the slings and arrows, would you do it again?
I don't know. I think so.
That's a sad answer to say, if I could do it all over again, I wouldn't.
Yeah, I would do it again. But I'm pretty tired. And it shouldn't have been this hard. But we got so much done. We got so much done. So that's what I think about.
What's the tough gotcha question that I should have asked you? I feel like this has been pretty, pretty friendly conversation we've had. What what could I have gotten you with if I'd wanted to embarrass you?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Well, I'm not going to answer that. But one thing we haven't talked about is like, what's going on in the city council? And I think, again, like, I think you follow the council closely enough that you you get this. But I think like, what's the big thing that people don't understand about the city council? And it's that we've never had seven votes. So why, you know, kind of ask, ask any question. Why isn't the council doing this? Or what is happening? Or what's going on? We don't have seven votes. I didn't have seven votes to become council president on any controversial issue. It's there just aren't a strong group of seven progressive council members that are parting of a, you know, committed governing majority in this council. And so you, that's why you always get, you know, you'll you'll have six votes often and then you'll have nine or 10. Because to make that leap to the next votes, there often isn't a, no one wants to be the seventh often. So you have to get the swing votes as a group. Or sometimes, you know, one council member will care about a particular issue. And so then they'll be the seventh on something, which tends to bring the others along. But if you think about, you know, what does a more powerful progressive council look like? To me, it looks like having a seven vote governing majority that's willing to make really hard decisions, that's willing to stand up to the mayor if there's a conservative mayor, that's willing to say, hey, you know, maybe we need to not approve some of the mayor's department head nominations if we don't think that they're in alignment with what we want to do. In that this council just hasn't been willing to take those kind of hard political stands. We've never had seven votes for stuff like that.
Yeah, I think that's a common misconception. I was talking to David Brower like a month or so ago, and he's like, oh, there's nine, there's nine progressives on the council. He's like doing this mental math about the outcome of the election. I had to say that there's barely like seven. So that's a good point.
We can get to nine votes. There are nine council members who generally, you know, will support progressive change, but that's really different than having a political coalition of seven votes.
So what's next for Lisa Bender? You're going to become a lobbyist? Do you want to become like a Walter? Are you the next Walter Rockenstein?
I mean, that's what most council presidents do. They become lobbyists for developers and.
Yeah, put that knowledge to work.
Corporate interests. I think I'm not on the council president to corporate lobbyist train. I don't know. I am not making any decisions until January. I gotta like get through the year and want to take a little break.
Okay.
My kids were babies when I took office, so I want to spend some time with these cute little people I live with.
I, a couple of years ago, I went back and watched, because I didn't follow the 2013 election. I watched your candidate forum with Meg Tuthill in 2013. May have been one of your first. You were not polished at all.
Unlike now.
Our first person to talk, to speak is Lisa Bender.
Thank you so much to our hosts and for everyone for coming out tonight. I'm Lisa Bender and I want to be the next city council member from Ward 10.
Yeah, well, you.
I haven't seen those. Was it the one that I? I did. I did a candidate forum nine, nine days after Isabel was born. If it was that one, I was probably pretty tired.
Uh, you had shortish hair, I think.
Know a lot about how city council worked. Yeah. My hair, I was, I had cancer like three years before I ran for office. So I was bald from chemo and then my hair was growing back out still.
Well, let's head into our final question.
Okay.
What are, what are three things that are making you happy? It's been a tough year and a half. You've been council president. I'm sure there are things that have gotten you down, like a, like a walk in a specific place, maybe, maybe your new dog, a book or a movie or an experience or a person. What's making you happy that you can recommend to other people to brighten their their moods?
Yeah. I mean, I spend as much time outside as possible, especially with my kids. So we've been biking. They're old enough now to do these long bike rides. So we'll bike up to Theater Worth Park or out along the trails. So beautiful in the fall. And and that's in Minneapolis. I don't live in Duluth. Not planning to move to Duluth. We did get a new, we did get a new puppy last year. She was for the seven year old who was having a hard time with COVID and being trapped in her, her house with two busy parents and her introverted big sister. So Maisy's a year old and that's another way. She'll take, she takes us for walks, getting outside with her, too. And then it's been really nice to get back together with people in person, you know, like the ice cream social and your root beer fest and just, you know, even stuff at school with the kids or just talking to humans face to face. I find that people have a really different. You know, there's just been so much online stuff that it's just nice to see people.
Yeah, I enjoyed Open Streets recently. That's.
Yeah, it's great.
As somebody who spends a lot of time on Twitter, it's, it's, it's not great online lately. I'm going to go back to the Duluth thing. If you, if you search like Lisa Bender on Google and there's an autocomplete thing where it fills the rest out, Duluth is the top like autocomplete thing for Lisa Bender.
I don't know what happened. So I ran into someone the other day and so I I honestly don't know what happened. I think what happened was one time during the summer of 2020, I went camping up north with my kids and my husband. I mean, I have colleagues who own like whole second houses.
Right.
Like, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but like, I don't own a second home or anything. I just go camping with my kids a couple times a year, you know? I work all the time, way too much. And so I think that this crime guy started saying, I live in Duluth. And then it became this like cascading attack. For a while, it was like an attack, right? She doesn't even live here. She lives in Duluth. But now I think that even people who aren't trying to be malicious, like believe that. And I don't know, sometimes I think, so I deleted my Facebook account last summer because I was getting a lot of rape threats and death threats. And I had a lot of people protesting outside my house and vandalism at my home. And I had credible threats against my safety and my family's safety. And I had like a million pictures of my kids on my Facebook page. And I didn't have time to like go through and adjust the settings or whatever. And so I just deleted the whole thing. And I don't go on Nextdoor. And sometimes I wonder, like, should I have stuck with those social media things and tried to like defend myself on there? And I just, I guess I just let it fester. But I was doing other stuff. I was running the city and.
Right. And it's coming from the left and the right. Like, I think it started with the crime guy. And then like, I would see people on the left and not, and talking about Duluth, too. It's, it was, it was weird. It was weird how that rumor just took off. And I'm not even sure what the point of the rumor was. Are you commuting from Duluth? I I don't know. That was bizarre. It's not a very, it's not a happy way to end the show.
Yeah, it's part of this attack that's like, she doesn't even do anything. But I don't know. That's just so crazy. I've gotten, just have to go into limbs and search for the, you know, you could search ordinances by author. I've, I've done a lot. A lot of people don't like what I've gotten done. Some people don't like what I've gotten done. But I've got a lot done. It's because I work all the time. I mean, I, I think even people who think, like Lisa Goodman and I get along fine, you know, she's, she tells me like, I hear people saying that you live in Duluth all the time and I tell them to knock it off. Like, I don't know. I, it's weird.
It is weird. And shame on you for ending the show by talking about how well you get along with Lisa Goodman.
Well, you know, sometimes I see those, you know, the slate of candidates. And while she and I differ a lot on some big things around transportation and climate change and that kind of stuff, I mean, she would hold the line on housing. It, you know, if it's a city council made up of the all of Minneapolis slate, Lisa Goodman's the last hope for housing policy.
Oh, well, that's, that's not a happy thought.
Well, people should get out and volunteer for their favorite candidates and they should write op-eds and I don't know, get off Twitter and go on Nextdoor. Is that what we all need to do?
Yeah, we need to to take over Nextdoor.
No, we need to go door knock and call our neighbors and.
That's true. So I enjoy what you do and have done, Lisa Bender. I endorse you as a person, even though you're not running for reelection. I endorse you as a person very strongly. I admire you. I think you've done great work for the city and I love you for it. Thank you for your service. I am your host, John Edwards. This has been the Wedge Life Podcast. My guest has been city council president, Lisa Bender. Thank you for joining me for an hour and 11 minutes. It was fun.